All right, good evening. Today is Monday, December 12, 2022. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. Do you have a motion to open the meeting? Cynthia, second. Lori, all in favor? All right, great. First order is Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. That's all right. All right, so our first item is comments by the board. Anyone have any comments tonight? Lori, you have anything you want to say?
Well, since we're leading, well, we've already started the holiday season. I'd like to wish everybody a happy one filled with lots of blessings and good health and prosperity.
All right, great. Thank you. Cynthia?
I guess a little of the same here. I'm sure everyone is very excited and looking forward to the time off, especially the students. So I'm wishing you lots of time with family and friends and just rest and enjoy. See you in the new year.
That's right, our next one is in January.
Yeah.
It's anywhere.
Yes, happy holidays and hope everybody enjoys their time off and the new year. And that's all I have to say.
Yeah. Holiday season sneeze up fast this year, it feels like.
Yes.
Can't wait, it's coming. But yeah, I don't have anything happy holidays to say about everybody. I know a lot to say about the capital improvement project and things of that nature, so I'll reserve my comments till then. So over to you.
Okay, great. So we'll first start with our student representatives who tell us so much about what's going on in the district. Our first representative is Ike Wamumu. He's a senior at Tuckahoe High School. And Ike presents himself as a role model to his peers through his service to others and participation in extracurricular activities. He is intelligent, responsible, and a caring young man who has great leadership quality. Ike has various accomplishments that really stand out. He participates in our marching band, our concert band, and our dance band where he plays the trombone. While doing all of this, he maintains an overall great GPA average. He has taken three AP classes over his school career. With those scores and other achievements, he's already been selected for one of his colleges and he's waiting to hear from some others. Outside of the classroom, Ike participates in so many other extracurriculars that I did mention before. He's president of our student government, which really speaks to his leadership and his kindness and the way he gets along with his peers. He's also a member of our quiz bowl team, which speaks to his intelligence. And he's a member of the Habitat Humanity Club. And those of you who may read the happenings, you see the wonderful things that that club does. And kids take off their weekends and Saturdays and they build new homes for people who need them in the community. And that really speaks to the type of person that Ike really is. Athletically, Ike is on our varsity basketball team, which you can see. Overall, Ike's achievements, both on academic and extracurricular level, reflect a hardworking and determined student. On top of all his achievements, and he doesn't know I know this, but Ike is a talented artist of comedy. Is that true?
Yeah.
He consistently gives his best effort to whatever he does. He's very well-liked and he is a true leader. So thank you.
Thank you. So I would like to start off. Good evening. My name is EK Chupu Wamumu, and I am a senior at the Tuckahoe High School. Over the course of my, over the course of my time in the high school, I have participated in an array of school activities at the academic and extracurricular level. These activities have given me the opportunity to develop important life skills, such as attention to detail and ability to collaborate and dedication to hard work. Through participation in Tuckahoe's rigorous academic coursework, I have been able to develop both as a student and as a person, culminating in me being a more goal-oriented and diligent working individual. Considering my experiences with the Tuckahoe's academics and clubs have improved my personal outlook, I am eager to create an environment that allows others to do the same. Here's an update on Tuckahoe's current academics and clubs. First, I would like to congratulate Mr. Evans and our wonderful band students for a presentation of Jingle Bells, the final frontier last week. It was a terrific display of the musical talent of our students. Please join us tomorrow, Tuesday, December 13th for our Winter Chorus Concert performance. The high school performance will begin at 7:30 PM. The Senior National Honor Society is hosting a restock, a show for the holidays. Food drive for Ecap. Drop-off boxes are located at the front entrance by security. Please drop off non-perishable items. The Tuckahoe School District is helping to support the Marine Corps Reserve in their Toys for Tots fundraisers. Collection boxes for new unwrapped toys are located in the school lobby and will be distributed to needy children in the community over the holiday. Please join us on Monday, December 19th for our Winter Strings Concert performance. The high school performance will begin at 7:30. Thank you for, thank you to our guidance staff for their presentation to the eighth and ninth grade parents last week highlighting the programs in the high school. Teacher progress reports for the second marking period will be posted on the portal at the end, end of the day on Wednesday. That's it for news. And now I would like to welcome my fellow classmate and teammate, John Banky.
Good job. Good job.
Great job. Thank you.
Before John gets up, I would like to also tell you about John Banky. He also is a senior at Tuckahoe High School. John has displayed a kind presence among his peers and faculty. His strong leadership and outgoing approach makes him a standout. He is thoroughly immersed in so many aspects of student life, including our jazz ensemble, new quiz bowl club, and Tigers Helping Club. He maintains a GPA, a very high GPA, and will graduate with a total of five AP courses under his belt. John has applied to very high-ranking colleges, and we expect that he will be hearing from some of them very soon. Again, John Banky is one of the most well-rounded students I have come across. His analytical mind and intellectual curiosity and outgoing personality places him as one of the most liked students from staff and peers. Outside the classroom, John is a student athlete that experiences a very tough extracurricular rigor. He displays hard work on and off the field, and he is able to maintain high honor roll throughout all of his high school. For his senior year, he has been chosen captain of our Section One Football Championship Team and varsity basketball team. John has been selected for football as an all-section and all-league player. John is someone you want to have a conversation with and someone who inspires those around him. He is beyond his years of maturity. John is a leader by nature, as shown in the honor of him being captain of the football team, voted into the homecoming court, and a senior member of our Student Athletic Council. I bet John before, you know, I knew he did any of this, but I just watched him around the school and I just started talking to him because I was like, wow, this kid is pretty amazing. I like his little pink ensembles he wore and all that and his cool style. I was like, I really like that spirit. So he is really, he really gets along with different social groups. He's, he's so bright. He's so nice. He's so positive. And as a little aside, when that really heartbreaking loss happened to the football team, I saw John really encourage his schoolmates and teammates, and he was so, so caring about it. I think he helped everybody get through that. Again, he's bright, and I have a little thing about John, too, that you may not know. So on top of all of this, John can also build cars. So very impressive in all the things he does. And John, come up and tell us what's going on.
Thank you, Dr. Goodman, for that introduction. As you heard, my name is John Banky, and I've been a student here since kindergarten. So standing up here is an honor. And today I'll be discussing the recent athletics since the winter season has just begun. As maybe you can tell, I just came from a varsity boys' basketball game, and we beat Pleasantville by nine. Last week, we played Haldane, a section rival, which we will see in the playoffs, and we beat them by one in a pretty nail-biting game. The JV Boys, who followed us today, they're playing right now against Pleasantville, have been off to a great start. They're two and one, and they have wins against Dover and Haldane. The Modified Boys team are practicing all, all the time, and their game opener is December 20th. Moving on to the girls, the girls varsity basketball placed second in their East Chester Holiday Tournament, which has some pretty high-ranking teams. And they plan to play in the Bronxel Tournament this weekend, and their homecomer, home opener is on Monday. There's a newly-formed JV basketball team for the girls. They have been two and O to start their season, which is really good. And they've been both against Wesley and Bryanbrook, Bryanbrook, which are very big schools. Modified Girls open their season with their first game this afternoon at North Salem. So we'll hear about that later. Now on to Bowling. The Bowling Varsity Team is off to a great start. They are three and one, sweeping their first two games and almost recently beating Dobbs Ferry four to three. Yesterday, the varsity cheerleading competed in Long Island, and they secured a bid for the Nationals, which will be held in Disney during February. The newly-formed Modified Cheer Team practices three times a week, and they work on their skills and development for these very complicated routines and stunts that they're always doing. The Pioneer League has been participating in their soccer season during this winter, and they've played five games so far. Two of our merged programs with other school districts include the wrestling team and the hockey team. Kai Sheffield has been representing Tuckahoe on the East Chester Varsity Wrestling Team. And he's had, he's won help matches, he's helped win matches against Ryan Eastchester. The Tuckahoe is involved in ETB-E, which is the hockey team, and that involves East Chester, Tuckahoe, Bronxel, and Edgemont. And we're looking forward to a pitcher day on Friday with our team. And Mr. C. asked for a shout-out when I was writing my thing, so I just want to thank him for everything he's put together for us. He's done a really good job stepping into the position, and I think this senior year has been outstanding sports-wise. I've never had anything close to it. So I just want to thank him.
That's awesome.
And thank you, guys, for having me, too.
Aw, thank you for being here.
Great job, John.
Thank you.
You must have good parents.
Good job, John.
Great job. You guys could go study.
Good job, Ike. Good job, Ike.
Nice job, guys. Thank you very much.
It's wonderful that we are, have the options of having a menu of different sport through our partnerships with our neighbor, neighboring districts. I think that is terrific. And it's good. It kind of gets us out there and helping us meet new people, and it's awesome. It's pretty awesome.
Thank you. And you've been an advocate of that.
I have been, yeah. But as long as it's in and it's working and everybody's happy with it, that's great. I'm excited for them. Well done, guys.
Great job.
Well done.
All right. Yeah, so next we have our comments by our superintendent.
Okay, first of all, I think what I really love about having the students speak is that the community and the board can see how articulate our students are. You know, we're great kids, we truly have, and how well our kids are doing in school. And I have to say rah-rah to all our teams because we seem to be winning pretty much everything. We're having a great, great year. Some other things that are happening in the district. Last week, we hosted a workshop with the Board of Education. We unpacked our progress towards the first two pillars of our strategic plan. Thank you to Dr. Kio, Dr. Sweeney, Dr. Linehan, Mr. Marash, Mr. Gillan, and Mr. De Bellis and Mr. Calafano for their participation. A special thank you to all the teachers and staff that worked hard to inform our status update. Again, I would say that's where the rubber meets the road. So it's the teachers and staff that really are doing the work. Districts and building leaders shared information about our social and emotional learning program, response intervention structures, and college preparation efforts. Our partners at Jump Start also spoke, and anybody who wants to watch this, it was really a very comprehensive workshop. And they talked about also how they prepare our students for college admissions exams. The discussion with the board was thoughtful, and we can see from all our presentations last time, last week, actually, students are planted firmly at the center of our work. Last week, our UPK, that's Universal Pre-Kindergarten Program, our leadership team welcomed families virtually in an open house information session. They covered the different considerations families bring to the key pre-K selection process, the curriculum we implement, and the connections to the K-12 program. Again, I want people who have four-year-olds to know that there is a pre-K program. It's very connected to our school program. We have foundations in our school program. They are doing foundations in preschool. And one of the parents, who so happens to be a teacher of reading and special education, whose child goes there, says, wow. She said, my other kids did not get this. The way that you're teaching reading in pre-K is amazing, and he's really getting it with the sound symbol relationship. So I'm so excited about this.
That's another thing we worked hard to get.
Yes, really did.
Big time.
And Ms. Kate Sporks, she covered the details of the lottery and the application process, and I always post about it on Facebook and in our happening, so please, please, watch for it. Again, our website is tuckahoeschool.org/UPK. Now's the time to get your youngest neighbors, if they don't know about it, to know about it, and register for, not only pre-K, now's the time to register for kindergarten. We appreciate the partnership of the PTA, the local library, and local houses of worship for getting the word out. Additionally, our staff worked on the extended day on important initiatives like vocabulary integration, differentiation, and data inquiry. We're doing a lot more with vocabulary this school year because we feel like, you know, that's something that our kids really do need work in. Our interventions, again, are very data-based, and we are using a new program called vocabulary.com. And we will talk more about it as we go through our budgeting process and our other tiers that we will present to the board. Last week, we also sent an email about an upcoming capital project. It was both in the happenings and in an email that I sent to you. Again, this is work that we have been doing with our facilities committee and with our board. The exciting details will be shared tonight. We look forward to sharing how we can capitalize on the progress we made with our fiscal plans and what else we plan to do. As we head into holiday break, I want to take the opportunity to wish our Board of Education and the entire school community a restful and happy winter reset. I hope that you have the opportunity to create memories with family and friends and that you ring in the new year marked with enthusiasm and promise. Tuckahoe leads the way, and that's a resolution you can count on.
Great. Thank you. All right, that brings us to the update on the current capital project and the presentation on the proposed capital project. Do you need us to? You're going to be using this screen, Russ, or no?
So our architect will start, and then Ms. Sparks will give some more information about the financial impact. You guys want to sit down here?
Yeah.
Or you could, if you're comfortable, feel free to turn around or walk towards the. You can stay on stage if you want.
So, good evening. I'm Russ Davidson, President of KGND Architects. Happy to be here again. Always love to see the awesome students. If you get them both to be architects, by the way, we need more architects. So we're here to talk a little bit about your current capital project and your capital project going forward. And Dominic Calji from Calji Construction is also here. I'm going to ask him to chime in from time to time. So your current capital project included improvements to Cottle Field and Siwanoy Boulevard. These are a couple of photos of the Siwanoy Boulevard that is completed. We had a really nice dedication ceremony, and I'm hoping the community's really enjoying it. But we took, we worked with you to convert the rock lot into the playground and really expanded the multipurpose field area. And that work was completed on time and on the original budget. You also have underway the conversion of the renovations to the cafeteria and the library. That work is also very, very close to what it was originally budgeted. This is one of the original renderings. This is what it looks like today. You can see the cement board up with the tile. Those recesses are for large screen monitors. The work's progressing okay. It has suffered from some of the supply chain disruptions of the pandemic, but it is moving. So this is the, looking towards the serving area. You can see the half-wall, the round columns. The ceiling is not in, but most of the soffits and the drywall and taping is complete. And that's, this is a rendering of the library area. So you can see the learning stairs below the orange wall and the new mezzanine up by the sort of multipurpose breakout spaces. And this is a construction photo. Those openings to the left are for the multipurpose breakout spaces. And you can see the framing of the learning stairs, and they're about to do the steelwork for the balcony. And maybe before we go any further, what's the scheduled completion dates for those? Dominic?
Thank you. I'm Dominic Calji, President of Calji Construction. As I was saying, what Russ was stating right now is pretty factual as far as the cafeteria moving along. The ceramic tile will be installed shortly. The cement board has been completed. And following the ceramic tile and the wood paneling will have the flooring, the ceiling and the flooring going in, and the terrazzo flooring being the last item. We do have a delay issue with the FRP doors. There's two of them, and that's part of the supply chain disruption that Russ was referring to. So we're looking at the first week of January that you can start using it, but we may have to put in temporary doors for the two FRPs. But other than that, we should be in good shape. The cafeteria, yes, cafeteria. The library right now, that, all the rooftop curbs are in. The structural steel is in, the masonry, and the concrete fill-on deck, that should be completed by the end of this week. And again, we'll have sheet rock flooring and ceilings going in there. Our biggest issue with that is the mechanical equipment. The direct outside air unit that we were expecting around this time now has been pushed off till January. And we have two rooftop units that were scheduled to come in in January. At the last meeting, we were informed that they won't be coming in until April. So right now, we're looking at the end of February that we should be able to have you start using the library. You'll have heat. We just won't have AC. And as far as direct air, that unit may not be working at that point, but of course, you know, push comes to shove, we could open windows if need be, but we'll have heat at least. Now, hopefully, we're going to get a better update on the RTU units, but as of the last project meeting, that's what we were informed. We were looking at, I believe, the, around the January 2023 for pretty much the majority of the work. There were some that was going to extend further on, but the majority we're looking at January 2023. Not too far off, but, and not that it makes anybody feel better, but I'm sure Russ can attest to, we're having mechanical delays on all our projects with rooftop units, whether it's Trane or any other manufacturer. It's just things are just absolutely crazy right now with deliveries. The, the big thing on the, on the RTUs is, again, just part of the whole delivery from what they have in stock and is the manufacturing.
Yeah, not unlike your, your school district, post-COVID, most of the world looked carefully at their HVAC systems and decided to change them out. So we've seen, you know, some sort of natural supply and demand pricing and other predatory pricing, but it's been really difficult. And that was one of the projects with, one of the difficulties we had with the bids on your 2021 capital project also was the HVAC work at Cottle and the HVAC work at Tuckahoe Middle School, High School, which came in well above budget due to this unprecedented demand for HVAC work. So we wanted to sort of pivot and talk about your next capital project, which is, includes getting back to renovating the Cottle cafeteria, which was part of your first project, but wasn't completely affordable in the current design. So we proposed a redesign. So this is the existing cafeteria. This is what the design in the 2021 project would have looked like, which included a very small expansion of the footprint. And this is the rendering of the current redesign of the Cottle cafeteria, which does not extend the footprint, but which does have large new windows and a complete renovation of the space. So it is very similar in the sort of goals. It'll feel like a cafeteria, not like a former gymnasium. It'll have really nice views out to Siwanoy Boulevard and the playing field. Those three large windows will actually have little banquet seating in them, so it will provide some additional seating in the cafeteria. And then the new door on the right, and again, a completely updated interior. So we believe that the school administrators feel this will really achieve all of their goals, and it will be much more affordable than the original, the original proposal. This is the existing exterior. And again, this used to be the multipurpose room for that building. So it was a gymnasium, which is one of the reasons it didn't have any windows. This was the original plan with a modest little extension. And this is the current plan with the large bay windows that are sort of sit-in bay windows. So everybody's very happy with this redesign, and that will be part of the project going forward. We've already completed the redesign, and we're in the process of filing an update with State Ed, so you have a permit as soon as you have a funding available. So going forward, the 2023 now capital project has two distinct purposes. The first one is to help you complete projects that were part of the 2021 bond that could not be funded due to the extraordinary cost escalation inflation. And basically, that really focuses on the two HVAC projects that are undone, one at Cottle Elementary and one at Tuckahoe Middle School, High School. And the second part of the funding is additional infrastructure work that is needed to keep the buildings in acceptable condition. So you had a building condition survey done in 2020 after your first bond by a different firm than ours. We have since taken their work and looked at each item in detail with your Facilities Committee and your Director of Facilities and included the highest priority items in this current proposal. So at Cottle Elementary School, in the, in the item one, we're going to include the renovation of the cafeteria and multipurpose room, renovation of single-user toilet rooms, and then air conditioning for all the classrooms. So that is budgeted at $3 million. And then the additional infrastructure work at Cottle is pretty modest. It's to upgrade older security cameras, replace some interior doors, and replace lighting to the extent the budget will allow for another $450,000. So in the new proposal, the total funding being requested for Cottle is $3,450,000. At the middle school, high school, you've got a number of infrastructure concerns. One of the big ones is roofing. So in the sort of positions mantra of first do no harm, in the architect's world, first do no harm means always keep your building envelope tight. And your roof is failing on a good portion of your building. This cannot be put off any longer. You, you had an infrared scan done of your roofs. This area has active wetness in the insulation. We also had our roof consultant analyze both areas, and this definitely needs to be replaced. So the alterations to Tuckahoe Middle, High School in the Category One, which is necessary to finish the work in the 21 bond, it's mostly air conditioning, but also some masonry restoration, budgeted around $1 million. budgeted around $1 million. But the biggest category of new work in this proposed bond is additional infrastructure work at Tuckahoe Middle School, High School, which includes partial roof replacement and related masonry repair, replacement of all steam piping and steam traps in the pipe tunnels, even more masonry restoration, and then replacement of all steam traps above the pipe tunnels. You have some leaking plumbing piping. An important thing operationally is to replace the entire public address intercom bell and clock system, which is outdated, has very few people who can maintain it, and is essential for the daily operations of the middle school, high school. And then again, if we have enough money left, we will do some interior lighting replacement to the extent the budget will allow. So the additional funding for all of the work described at Tuckahoe Middle High is $5.8 million. And that brings the total amount of new funding being requested in this bond proposition to $9,250,000. But a couple of important footnotes. You actually still have $1.6 million from the 2021 bond available to spend. So while we say that the work in the 2021 bond wasn't all affordable, it wasn't, but we also didn't spend all of the money yet. So you have 1.6 available from that to put towards the work that was just described. And then $750,000 of the total, $9,250,000, will be provided by transfer from the district's capital reserve. And 8.5 is really the new bond request. So you were, you were wise enough to put money into a capital reserve, and the board and the Facilities Committee felt it was wise to spend some portion of it for this infrastructure work. So you have to vote on the full amount, the 9.25, but you'll actually be getting more work done than that, and some of this will not be new tax impact. So that's the proposed plan, and, you know, we worked hard with your administrators and the Facilities Committee to put it together, and, you know, we hope that we can help you get it all done.
Okay, so now we're going to have a quick presentation from Pete Sparks, who's going to speak about the financial side of this proposal. Russ and Dom, if you guys wouldn't mind just hanging a little bit, because we'll just have some comments and questions for the whole thing. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll just talk tonight about the cost of the proposed project and the impact on taxpayers. So first, I would like to thank our dedicated Facilities Planning Committee members who worked tirelessly to review and prioritize the needs of our facilities. This pro, sorry, this project will be for additional funding to complete the 2021 project and new funding for critical infrastructure work that has surfaced in the past few years. Just some statistical information about our district. The total assessed value for our district is $17,943,842. The median assessed value for an average home is $9,150, and there are 1,262 single-family homes in our district. This info we got from our local assessor's office. So to put that into perspective, for the 2022-23 school year, our tax rates are $1,694.40 per $1,000 of assessed value. So a house with a median assessed value of $9,150 has a school tax bill of $15,504. How do districts pay for large capital improvement projects? Large-scale projects cannot be accomplished within the annual budget. School districts issue bonds to fund large capital improvement projects. Debt service payments are typically amortized over time, usually to line up with building aid, and these projects allow us to maximize New York State building aid. School districts can only borrow up to the amount of funds that have been authorized by the voter-approved referendum. School districts also, if they have a capital reserve, can use this capital reserve to finance all or part of the costs of construction, reconstruction, the acquisition of a specific type or, a specific or type of capital improvement or equipment. The proposed project cost is $9,250,000. We are proposing to use $750,000 from our capital reserve fund, which means 8.5 million would be funded from bonds. We estimate the annual cost of debt for this is $805,000. We estimate building aid at $140,000 annually. The net annual cost of this new debt is $657,000. Taking this into account, the estimated annual average cost for an average Tuckahoe UFSD homeowner who has a $9,150 assessed value would be $335 annually. This is based on what we know now, and interest rates are really high. So, you know, we're hoping in the future, when we do go into long-term bonds, that we will have lower interest rates, but our assumptions used are based on today. Here you will see a slide that shows our debt service and what the proposed project would do to our debt service. So the blue is our current existing debt service. It does include projections for the current bond that is not finished in blue, and the red is the proposed project. While we do have an increase for a few years, there is a large drop-off in the 28-29 school year. That would be, the 26-27 school year would be a good time to look at additional projects to keep our debt service level when it drops off. So to summarize, the total amount of new funding is $9,250,000. Approximately 1.6 million of funding is still available from the 2021 bond. $750,000 will be provided by the district's transfer to capital, and we would be asking for $8.5 million in new bond issuance. Next steps, the board will discuss the referendum at tonight's meeting. Then we would have community information and virtual town halls with a referendum proposed for February 15, 2023. And then it would go on to preparation of design and plans by the architects, SED, submittal and review, and then construction.
Okay. Thank you for those presentations. So we'll open it up to some, some discussion and questions. I'll start off with, just for clarification for our, for our audience who have us watching at home, the new design, Russ, of the, of the Cottle cafeteria, that alone, what do we estimate that's going to cost? Just, you can use the microphone, yeah.
I think, I think between our two offices, we came up with around 1.3 for the Cottle cafeteria. So that's actually affordable within the leftover money?
That's why I asked, just so, just in full transparency, we, we could, we could finish, but we wouldn't be able to finish the entire scope of the first bond, because that doesn't include the HB work.
At, at both buildings, that's right. And that's the, that's the numbers that really shocked us.
Right. Yeah. So in that, in that 3.4 number you gave for the work at Cottle, that's, that includes the cafeteria and HB work?
Yes, it does.
Right. Yeah, and some lighting, and doors and things of that nature. Okay.
Right. Right. I mean, the, the, the variable right now is lighting replacement. We think you can afford some of it, but that was never in the first bond scope, and that's what we're trying to stretch and get you done, get done, which you'll...
And cameras as well, yeah.
Yeah, well, you'll go to LED lighting, you'll save money on that going forward.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Any other questions for, for Russ on the project?
Yeah. Yeah. First, I'd just like to thank also the Facilities Committee, which Pete and I join in on those meetings also, but just all the members of the community that have spent their time and volunteered. We have wonderful and very, very intelligent sort of in-the-field HVAC people. We have architects, we have so many great members, so thank you to them. And thank you, Russ, for that presentation. I know that you've done a lot of work, certainly sitting in that committee. We see a lot of spreadsheets. I mean, there's a lot of conversations, a lot of detail that goes into it, so today's a very nice overview, but it certainly is hours and hours of work and going through each list of what these buildings need. What I was curious about is when you talk about, so we talked about finishing Cottle, which I think everybody, the cafeteria was on the original one, that was, everyone's very excited to see that happen. So we're going to move forward. Obviously, I would say with that seems to be an easy one, right? The other things that we've talked about, the meetings that we talk about tonight, can you just, can you just discuss what if you didn't do that, right? What if we decided we're not going to spend the money, we're not? Because I, I, I'm going to just sort of say, being, being in this district almost 20 years, we, and I'd listen and come to meetings, and we never really discussed buildings. It was never a conversation, not that I, that I remember, and Pete, if you can agree with that or not, but we've really just started sort of really paying attention and wanting to give our students and our, and our staff more, right? So that, that's sort of, those are the nice sort of surface things that we see, but we also have not really paid attention to, I think, the infrastructure as well as maybe we could have. And I don't know, I'm assuming, because I just never remember hearing these conversations, but I think for the people watching at home, they should really understand that this is a historic building that needs a lot of maintenance, and really, we want to keep it as beautiful as it is and improve it where we can. And then also have it healthier. Now, you talk about leaking plumbing and leaking roofs, and I think, I think all, that's so important, we need to, that should, to me, should be very important to fix, no?
Well, the Cottle cafeteria project is about having a more pleasant educational environment and experience for young people, which I would still argue is about their health, safety, and welfare. It was designed as a multipurpose room. It was the CAFSA Gymnasium in 1955. So you've built an auditorium since then, you've built a gymnasium since then, but you've never converted that room into an actual cafeteria. So I think that's long overdue. I think it's important, and I think it will be a help, it, it does come with new HVAC and fresh air and air conditioning, so it'll have a view to Siouxsie Boulevard, and it'll have a fresh air, it'll be a more pleasant space.
The clean air is an important aspect of that.
The rest of the projects are all health, safety, and welfare, and I would put them in the category of pay me now or pay me later. You're going to do them some...
Pay me more later.
Pay you more later. You are going to do them someday. There's no doubt about it, given the age of these buildings, which are well cared for. None of this work is about negligent maintenance. It's all about age-related replacement and changing expectations. When I started, 37 years ago, as a school architect, air conditioning in New York was not necessary. Air conditioning is necessary now. You have warmer months in September and much warmer months in May and June, which is when your testing takes place, when you need your best interior environment. So I really think a lot of this is pay me now or pay me later. It's not that a lot of this was unknown three or four years ago, but I think the former boards, and some of you were on them, was let's do what we feel is most important now and build on our successes. And you've built on that second-floor addition, was very well received, the Cottle Field was very well received, and I think when you see that new cafeteria and library, people will be very impressed. So you're trying to build on your success and move forward with modest proposals to do what needs to be done in the older buildings.
Yeah, that's very well said. And, and I, you know, I think also what needs to be considered as well is, community may be thinking, well, this is the third bond that we're coming out with in a fairly short period of time, but I don't, I'd like to go back into the research on it, but I, I know there was a very long period of time where there was no capital improvement projects done in this district.
Not that I recall, but not to say things weren't being done, but there wasn't necessarily a bond.
Yeah, so the last big one was, was the addition to the middle school, high school, which was, I'm not sure, do you know when that was?
Probably 2017, 2018.
2008.
15, 20 years ago.
I know, because it was when it moved here.
2008, okay, 2008, yeah. So, you know, and I know typically, and Russ, correct me if I'm wrong, most school districts in our area go through a capital improvement on average every five years or so. Is that, is that correct?
Right. And, and your buildings are older than average.
Right, right.
And, you know, on the national register, so they're, they're not inexpensive to take care of.
Yeah. So my point is, is that, you know, we, we had a pretty long stretch where we didn't do any capital work, and I think it's just come, not always come to a head, but it kind of has come to a head, which is that some of these things just need to be addressed. And like Russ alluded to, everything in, in this proposal is related directly to health, safety, and quality of life. All, all hot topics, you know, quality of air, which, which we all, was top of mind with, with the pandemic, safety with, with what's been going on, you know, throughout the country, unfortunately, things like cameras and doors and stuff like that. And then, of course, just, just quality of, of life, you know, experiences for our kids. And I think you said it really well, Russ. I think that's been our strategy now for, for, ever since I've been on the board, has been to sort of take this in small chunks, so that we're kind of taking our time, we're doing it thoughtfully, we're not biting off more than we can chew, we're having some success, showing that success and building upon that. So I, I do, I like, I like what we've been doing, I think it's the, it's the better way to go. Some may argue, why didn't, why don't we just do a giant bond? But I think this is actually the more responsible way, way to do it. And, 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 and look, we, we are coming out probably a little sooner with this bond than we probably would have anticipated, but that's because there was work left on the table from the last one, and it just made sense that if we were going to go back out for, for some more money to, to address these other issues as well. So I'm excited about it. I think it's, it's, you know, it, it sounds like a big number. It's, it's money, it's not, I'm not going to make light of it, but I really appreciate the work you did, Ms. Sparks, on, on breaking it down, because a lot of times these numbers sound large, but they don't really mean much to people until they see how it's going to actually affect your tax bill, and you're talking about an average of $335 a year. You know, again, I'm not trying to make light of it, some folks in our community are fixed incomes, this stuff does add up after a while. But in terms of what we're going to get in return for that investment, I think it's, it's a pretty, a pretty solid ROI, you know, in terms of what we're going to get for it. So, and then also, you know, we are an expanding district. I mean, you know, a lot of the work we've been doing in Cottle is, is also in part to accommodate the additional increase in attendance. And although we're not really adding too much square footage on, on the cafeteria, the redesign of it to a more modern layout and furniture will get us more seating. It will, it will help accommodate some of that additional, additional, you know, children. So, you know, I, I certainly see this as, as a, as a really good step forward. And, and one more point I'll make, just to build on a comment that Laura made before regarding our Facilities Committee, is just so everyone knows the process, we did start out with, with a master list of all things that, that likely should be addressed or could be addressed in terms of improvements, and we whittled that list down a bit through the, through the help of our Facilities Committee and KGND and Caligi, down to what we thought was really, really needed. So just so everyone knows, it was a process, it's not like we're just pulling these things out of the, out of the air. We started out with that sort of complete everything and, and built it down to what we really thought we needed to address and made the most sense to address, address now. So, yeah.
I just had, just really one thing. Thank you to the Facilities Committee, thank you to Angie. I did have, you, when you talked about the middle school and the high school roof, it's, it's the entire roof? You said sections of the roof, right? Or how did you?
No, it's, it's a partial roof replacement.
Partial roof.
Of your highest priority areas, which are, haven't been done, I believe, in over 30 years.
Wow.
So you're going to, you're going to be back at your roof probably in five years or more for the rest of it. It's a complicated roof on this building. I think there's 15 or 20 separate roofs that comprise the roof to this building. So this is the worst. It's a complicated roof on this building. I think there's 15 or 20 separate roofs that comprise the roof to this building. So this is the worst part and the related masonry work for it. But you, you have active leaks from your roof. You can see evidences of leaks. In lots of places throughout this building. And the other work is steam leaks. So a steam leak is what caused your gym floor to fail. So these are, these are not problems that will wait. And so the steam traps really throughout the building. You also have domestic water piping that's just so old that it springs leaks in this building. So, you know, the work, the new infrastructure work in this building is urgent and needs to be addressed.
And that, that was, that was my, going to be my follow-up question. So if we're only addressing like the area of, areas of our roofing, I guess this would be part of that area.
I, I believe it is. But this is, you know, two different roofing companies have looked at this, roofing specialists, not just roofing contractors. And this is their recommendation of what to address now. Roofing is kind of like tires. You don't want to replace them before they're worn out.
Exactly.
You want to get the most life out of it. So that's why we're not doing all the roofing now. We're doing what needs to be done now. The rest of it has some additional life on it. So you're going to get the maximum use out of that roofing.
So with the section that isn't, that needs to be done, but we can hold off more, is it going to be able to wait until we can do a bond? Because you said 2620s.
We should start planning. Twenty-six, twenty-seven would be the year to plan for another project. And we, we did make some repairs to some roofs now that we, we had urgently had to address. So we did make some minor repairs.
So it'll, it'll, those sections can maybe hold, we pray, can hold out until we can.
That, that's what the roof consultant believes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it also, you know, worth mentioning too, you, you said before, pay now or pay me later. And I think that's a really important point. And, and I think it's not just pay me now, pay me later, it's pay me along the way too. So I think, you know, what type of stuff that needs to be addressed, if we don't address it every year, we're going to be incurring more costs in repairs, more cost in patches, more cost in repairing the damage done by the, by, by whatever the leak there is or, or that may be. And then the new stuff, the new installation, the new upgrades almost definitely will save us money in terms of, of, of energy bills, right? So you have a lot of inefficiencies in these current, in this current infrastructure that would, you know, sort of pay itself back in terms of the cost savings of more efficient lighting, more efficient heating, you know, things of that nature. So I think all that needs to be considered is, is the efficiencies that we get out of upgrading all these, all this old infrastructure.
Yeah, I mean, it'll help somewhat, but you have old buildings, they're always going to need money. So I think that, you know, establishing your capital reserve and starting on this program of relatively modest capital projects in the context of what happens in the rest of the county and the world, so that you maintain a level debt service is smart planning and it'll, it'll keep your buildings good for generations.
So within that bond, like you're saying, if this was the area that was going to be done, it doesn't include any of the fixing of where the roof had gone?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can address some of that. That's really not the big cost. The cost is the masonry and the, the roof covering. And that's why, if you look carefully, there's almost 600,000 or close to, almost a million dollars with a masonry repair, because your building is leaking from the outside in and from the top down. And a lot of these leaks that you see here on the edge are actually masonry leaks, not roof leaks.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the terminology.
And you've had some in the classrooms upstairs as well. And Anthony Russo's been very good. You've been doing repairs, and we've been working with him to help him figure out what's going on in each different area. But all, all the issues with your building here are not unusual or atypical. They're just age-related.
And the average cost to homeowners would be 335?
Yep.
Estimated annually.
Estimated annual. Total project being 8.5 million for the work at all three schools.
Yeah, so the way this lays out, and I know this can be a little confusing, because there's so many layers to this. Essentially, the 8.5 million dollar new tax that we're asking for the community to support gets us about 10.8 million dollars worth of work. So it's, it's kind of a, and then, and then plus state aid comes back off of that. Let's, let's not, without even considering that, because it's 8.5 of new money, plus the 1.6 that we already have from the last bond, plus the 750 from, from the reserve. So for, for that money, we're getting 10.8 million dollars worth of work done, so.
And, and just the timeline, Ms. Sparks, or if you guys know, as far as we vote tonight, and then it's just so that people at home know, what, what does that timeline look like? And when, when would they be voting on this?
The game plan is for a February 15th vote. And, and I believe that would put us in a good place, right, Russ, to hopefully be ready to, to do that heavier, heavier work in the Cottle Cafeteria over the, over the summer.
That's right. Since that's redesigned, that's already underway. So we're, we're, as long as the state permitting process remains stable, which is always a wild card. But we believe we'll be able to do the Cottle Cafeteria work in the summer of '23. And then you'd see the air conditioning and the other infrastructure work through summer of '24.
So it would be, so we would open next year with the cafeteria operable?
We're hoping.
Just without air?
We're hoping. We're hoping so.
So we would have to have a plan B just to keep.
It might take a month or longer, a month or two longer.
Right.
Where you can still use the outdoor space to finish the cafeteria project entirely. But that would be our hope, is that sometime October, early November, your Cottle Cafeteria is 100% done. And then the next summer, you'll be looking at a lot of the infrastructure work and the additional air conditioning.
Actually, brings up a question I wanted to ask about the current project. Just confirm. So I haven't heard any complaints, at least I haven't heard any complaints, about noise with these two projects with the ongoing instructions. So I'm assuming that there hasn't been an issue with that, right? It's been pretty.
There's, I, I'm sure there were some complaints along the way for that. It always happens with some of us, but I think we've pretty much taken care of them.
Yeah. Well, you must have, because the last project over at Cottle, we, the board heard quite a bit about it. So it rose, it rose to a level where we heard about it.
You had a bad day of welding in the high school. I think we heard about that way up in Mount Chisco, but that was taken care of.
It's been good.
It's been good. It's been good. I, I came in somewhere when I, when I started here, carrying those. Many went off of COVID, but yeah, also wanted to talk about that. Nothing like that.
Good, yeah. I think it's also just, because you just, we got lucky with the locations of these spaces in terms of being isolated now. Okay. Any other questions for us or Faith? So I, I'm glad Faith, you put up on the board, because I was going to mention, I think the next step for us as a board, once we, so tonight, we're going to be voting on secret resolution and, and the resolution to, to put this on the ballot. So two, two very, very important steps in order to get this bull rolling. Once that's done, I think the next order of business for us as a board would be to maybe set up a town hall. I think it's time to start communicating a little more with our communities, especially being in this. This one's a little more complicated with the different funding sources and stuff. So I anticipate that there'll be some questions and discussion. So maybe we should try and get something on the calendar for early next calendar year after the holidays and, and get that going.
Town halls would be with representatives from the K G.
Well, I, I would, I would imagine we can invite Russ and Dom to participate. We would probably have, in order to keep it, thank you, Russ, appreciate it. In order to keep it as not a board meeting, we probably would limit it to two board members on the panel. But we can basically have a panel, maybe two board members and, and Russ and Dom and yourself, obviously, and, and just, you know, open it up to the community and just have a, a back and forth question and answer period and discussion, right?
Probably do these virtually. I think we'll get more people to follow up. It's been invited people here to me. But it's sort of been what I've been seeing lately.
More, more people watch from remote.
Even when we do our own things with the people, they're getting used to that.
Yeah, come home from work and they pop, jump onto.
Maybe older people would prefer in person, and we should do a hybrid.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
Well, we did invite everybody to this, but we could.
Maybe during the day.
Maybe during the day. I sent out two letters about it.
To the public?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we got a great turnout.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. I told them they could also watch it.
Well, I do, I do think that if we.
Watch it, but I think we could.
No, I do think if we, if we.
During the day in town.
If we do a town hall where, where the forum is for, for people to, you know, this is a board meeting where, of course, there's comments, but as we've said many times before, our comment period isn't for back and forth discussion. If we have a town hall where we are actually have the format of back and forth discussion, I think you will get some participation. The last time we did this, I remember, I think we did a, it was pre-COVID. We did a town hall, I believe, on safety and a couple of other topics. And it actually was pretty well attended. And we had quite a few people come out, and we had quite a bit of dialogue.
Yeah, I think more people prefer that than having to like officially come up and speak. Like, they're more comfortable with that type of setting.
We had it several times, too, if I'm not mistaken. They were done at Cottle.
We did it at the Cottle Auditorium.
Yeah.
I think that format is more conducive to people coming out.
But this time it would be better, because we can also loop in the, integrate the virtual aspect. So that would be.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Maybe there could be an in-person and, and then we have somebody reading, like maybe Mr. Keough can come and he could read off the questions as they come in.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
At the same time, we did live ones.
We did do, we, we did do a total virtual forum during COVID for the last bond. And that went pretty well.
But guys, if we do a hybrid, then everybody hears everything and it's been done. We should embrace technology.
Yeah.
Hybrid is great, yeah, yeah.
I'll give it a hybrid.
Okay.
Okay? All right. So we can, we could, yeah, we'll do that. We'll go, we'll put a date and, and announce that right after the holidays. We'll get that going right after the holidays. Okay. So we have some, some business to the board. Actually, we have a pretty light agenda today. The biggest items are the, are the two resolutions. I'm sorry, what?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of the meeting. Did anybody mention about the athletic council?
No.
No.
Do you, do you want an alibi on your comments, Teres?
Walk down there and I can be part of the audience.
Go ahead, Teres, why don't you, why don't you go ahead and speak about that, I mean, you missed your comment.
Sorry, just because I did want to get this in and I'm here. Oh, boy. God. Hang on, sorry.
No one even wants to try these.
Okay. So.
You want these?
I am killing today, folks. So, good news, it's almost over. So I just wanted to make everybody aware, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Tuckahoe Athletic Council right now as a parent member of that council, that I'd like to introduce the Tuckahoe Athletic Council, which was formed by parents in the district. The goal is to enhance community spirit by supporting Tuckahoe High School athletic programs. We recently worked with district administrators to organize homecoming and a senior sport banners day for senior day. Our goal is to provide scholarships for this year's seniors, support the end-of-year dinners, and assist to purchase a P A system for both the gym and fields. Though, to update that, this was written last week. Mr. C has said that people who've come to look, I don't think the gym's going to be part of that. But in any event, to support the school and enhancing the athletic program. A communication recently went out via email to the district for people to join. We can only proceed with these goals with the support of membership, so please join. There will also be opportunities for volunteering at various events and in fundraising. Our fundraising efforts will be sent out after the new year. And then Beth Anne said, not that you need this, apparently, I think. So please, everybody join. So far, we're off to a strong start. I think homecoming was great. And obviously, the district did all the heavy lifting, and we were just able to kind of support and enhance it. But I think it's great. It also is an opportunity for community involvement and parent involvement.
Yeah. I think, I think it's awesome, and I want to thank you and all the parents that got this off the ground. I think it's, it was well overdue for us to have something like this in the community. And it's, it's, it's tremendously helpful. I mean, it's, it's how a lot of things that, a lot of those extra frills that you see when you go to other school districts that, you know, you may say, how can we not do this in our school district? And, and the assumption is that the school's doing it, but it's not. It's, it's strong parent organizations. And as a small district, I think we, we, we maybe felt we, we couldn't do it, but you guys have shown that we can, so.
Anything is possible.
Yeah, yeah, so it's really, it's really going to be great.
And if anybody's really interested in volunteering, we've also had some people reach out already to like join the group. We intentionally have kept it small, just because I'm now an M B A student and best groups are between five and nine people. So that's our goal, because, you know, too many cooks in the kitchen, sometimes things don't get done. And not that everybody doesn't have great ideas, but just to kind of propel things forward. So there's going to be plenty of opportunity. The district has, of course, been great and hugely supportive. We've been working with them since the summer. And again, me as a parent and not a board member. And so that's it. So please join. I think it's great. I think the kids are going to benefit from it, and it's just going to enhance our athletic programs, which are awesome as it is, and growing.
For, for those who maybe just don't have the time to, to donate their time, but want to donate some, some money, is there a way for them to do that yet?
Right. So on the form that was filled out, there is a way to register. You can pay by Venmo. Jen Schneider, right now, is acting as the treasurer, and money is greatly appreciated. So please, right now, that's mainly the point of the membership drive, is just to raise.
Raise money, yeah.
Similar to the P T A, you're not necessarily on the executive board, but you're basically joining, you're donating your money, and then that money goes to all the athletes in the district. So we, we don't pick any favors. Everybody gets equal contribution to their team. And, yeah, so I think that people sometimes get confused about joining. I remember that I did the P T A, I was on it, and I was in charge of membership. And people would come up to the desk and be like, I don't have the time to do this. I said, no, 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 you just have to join, and your money goes to all of our programs. You don't have to join to show up to meetings, right? So there's no, you're not asking people to come to meetings, you're just asking people to join and donate money.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Just, I'm not clear.
And, yeah. Thank you, Laura. Right. So, and that's great. And then I think it's good. Listen, I'm excited. We're off to a strong start.
Yeah.
There are great people that, you know what I think also these things highlight? Is the fact that we have such talented, good people within our community. And I feel like situations like this bring out the best in everyone.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, so that's it. I also wanted to, and I know this is like so out of order, but whatever, this point. I wanted to just offer congratulations to all the football players who won, you know, the Section One, which was great, and especially to Coach Diarco, because he was coach of the year. And I just think, and he knows, I think he's awesome, I call him Ted Lasso. And for as upsetting as that loss was, the fact that those boys handled it so well and walked off that field with dignity and grace, it's truly inspiring. And it goes to show you what good leadership can bring to a group. So I'm just very proud to be a part of it. I wanted to offer my congratulations. I think the seniors are awesome, and they're such a great group of boys. So that was all.
Yep, well said.
He was given an award at the Section One dinner. Oh, Coach John Diarco, yeah. So he won two awards. I think it was all section and all conference coach, in other words, coaches select from our C D division.
Okay.
And he came, he won, yeah.
That's great.
Congratulations.
You know, it's not C D, you always think it's just, you know, it's not that many schools. But, yeah, he's on, he, we, really, really proud of him. And, and then for a small district, we had a, a lot of awards for our boys, you know? Under C D, so it was great to, it was really very, very special.
It'll be the next Tuckahoe happening.
Yes. I figured, yeah, yeah. We're just jumping ahead, Dr. Goodman.
Sorry. Sorry. You don't want to steal your thunder, Dr. Goodman, and two of the boys' last names were Banky. So congratulations.
Thank you, Therese.
To everybody.
There are lots of great things happening in our district, from curriculum to S.E.L. to the building renovations that we're doing, as well as our sports programs, just a lot of really great, positive things going on, and I, I think after coming out of a pandemic and all that brought with that, we are really continuing to rise, and I'm looking forward to it continuing, and our students just really growing and developing into who God really has them to really be, right? What their, what their purpose is. And I also want to thank our administrators, and of course, our amazing, amazing teachers. I can't say it enough, our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our buildings and grounds team, really have a great organization here, and, and I think it's something that we should just be very proud of, and it's just nice to be really enjoying some good and positive things, don't you think, right? Because we always hear about the bad.
That's how we get to get the capital bond, I guess it's passed.
Yes.
To continue the momentum, right? And to update our facilities for our kids, it's all good stuff.
Exactly.
All right, well, I don't know about you, but I'm pretty excited about the consent agenda, why don't you?
Yeah, yeah, no, let's, let's get into, we, we have a pretty, a pretty light agenda, so let's, let's get it done.
Do we have a first recognition?
So first recognition of the audience, but given, given the attendance.
I was the audience, remember? I stood there, and now I'm here.
I'm going to assume we're going to have.
I was the audience.
Unless there's somebody hiding behind the corner, then I'm not seeing. All right, so that brings us to our consent agenda, resolve that the Board of Education approves Consent Agenda Items 2 through 6. You have a motion? Lori, second. Laura, any discussion on these items? All in favor? All right, great. So we only have two businesses on the board, items, both are about the new bond proposal, one is the SECRE Resolution, and the second is the actual resolution for the, for the ballot and vote and bond. So first, I'll read the SECRE Resolution, it's a little lengthy, so I apologize, but I'll get through it as fast as I can. Whereas the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District is considering to undertake a capital project consisting of improvements, renovations, rehabilitations, and replacements of its existing school properties, specifically including improvements, renovations, rehabilitations, and replacements to the Cottle Elementary School, including renovations of the cafeteria, multipurpose room, and restrooms, HVAC upgrades and improvements for classrooms, improvements to security systems, and the replacement of interior doors and lighting, and improvements, renovations, rehabilitations, replacements of the Tuckahoe Middle School, High School, including masonry repairs and restoration, HVAC upgrades and improvements for classrooms, replacements of roofing, HVAC and plumbing repairs, and replacements, upgrades and replacements in the, in the communications announcement and clock systems, and upgrades and replacements of electrical systems and lighting. And whereas the Board wishes to fully comply with its obligations under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRE, and the regulations there, thereunder with respect to proposed action, and whereas the Board has carefully considered the nature and scope of the proposed action, and whereas upon review of the foregoing, the Board makes the following determinations. Proposed action involves certain improvements, renovations, upgrades, and replacements to the school district's existing school buildings, building, and grounds as set forth above. The Board hereby declares the school district as the lead agency for purposes of the State Environmental Quality Review Act and regulations, which is SECRE, associated with proposed, the proposed action. The proposed action represents maintenance and repair involving no substantial changes in the existing structure or facility within the meaning of 6 N.Y.C.R.R., which is New York Code Rules and Regulations, I believe, is that correct? I'll write that down. Yeah, New York Codes Rules and Regulations, Part 617.5, Paragraph C, Section 1, and/or replacement, rehabilitation, or reconstruction of a structure, or a facility in kind within the meaning of 6 N.Y.C.R.R., Part 617.5, Paragraph C, Section 2, and/or a routine activity of an educational institution, including expansion of existing facilities by less than 10,000 square feet of gross floor area within the meaning of 6 N.Y.C.R.R., Part 617.5, Paragraph C, Part, Section 10. The proposed action will in no case have a significant adverse impact on the environment based on the criteria outlined in 6 N.Y.C.R.R., Part 617.7, Paragraph C, and it is not otherwise a Type 1 action as defined by 6 N.Y.C.R.R., Part 617.4. The proposed action is a Type 2 action within the meaning of 6 N.Y.C.R.R., 617.5, and is therefore not subject to review under SECRE and the regulations thereunder. Now therefore be resolved that the Board finds and concludes that the proposed action is a Type 2 action within the meaning of 6 N.Y.C.R.R., 617.5, and therefore is not subject to review under SECRE and the regulations thereunder. Do we have a motion? Laura, second. Lori, any, any discussions, this is basically us stating that we do not need a SECRE review. All in favor? Great, okay. The next one is.
I'm sorry, I need to interrupt, but did you approve an agreement, was that part of the?
Oh, did I miss something?
Was that, I don't know if I'm, was that part of the?
Was that the consent agenda?
Oh, was that part of the consent agenda, I'm sorry.
That was part of the consent agenda.
That's part of the.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's part of consent, I apologize, sorry.
That's okay. The next resolution is, basically lays out the details of, of the bond proposal, the vote, what we're actually, actually asking the community to, to put forth. This resolution is eight pages long, I did a little dry run, it would take me 15 minutes to read it, if I was to read it from front to back, but I talked to our attorneys today, and I don't need to read this, I can, I am allowed to just summarize it. So I take it all of you have read it in the, in the, the agenda, and that, and you're, who needs to know what's in it, because you're voting on it. What I will do, though, is I'll read, I will just read the section, the part that, that lays out what's going to be on the ballot, because I think that's the most pertinent piece of this. A lot of the language in this eight-page resolution is redundant, it's kind of says the same thing a couple different times, a couple different ways, but the main message is that we're looking to, to put this on, on a, on a ballot for vote on Wednesday, February 15, 2023, between 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., which is like our normal voting practices, at the two main polling, voting places that we always have, the Tuckahoe Community Center and Cottle School. So what I'm going to read for the public is basically what's going to be on the ballot for, for vote, so I'll read that now. The Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District and the County of Westchester, New York is hereby authorized to expend the amount of $4 million in addition to the amount heretofore approved by the voters on May 18, 2021, for the construction of alterations and improvements to all district school buildings and sites. Such additional amount needed on account of unanticipated increases in the cost of the 2021 project, and to construct additional alterations and improvements to all district school buildings and/or sites, and the, and to the extent, therefore, the amount of $5 million, $5,250,000, both expenditures equaling an estimate total aggregate of cost not to exceed $9,250,000, that the amount of $750,000 is hereby authorized to be expended from the district's, district's Tuckahoe Union Free School, School District Capital Reserve Fund 2020, heretofore approved by the voters in June 2020, to pay for a portion of the cost of the project, and that a tax is hereby voted in the amount of not to exceed $8,500,000 to pay balance of said estimate total aggregate cost of the project. Such tax to be levied and collected in installments in such years and in such amounts as shall be determined by the Board of Education, and that in anticipation of such tax, the Board of Education is hereby authorized to issue bonds of the district in, in a principal amount of not to exceed $8,500,000, and a tax is hereby authorized to pay the principal and interest on such bonds. So that's what's going to be on the ballot to vote for. And again, it's, it's basically taking the amount of the, of the, of what it costs, what it's going to cost to fix, finish the first bond, plus the amount of the additional work we're looking to do, and, and also authorizes us to take $750,000 out of the Capital Reserve Fund to help offset the cost of this. So anyone who wants to read this entire resolution, this entire eight pages, it's, it's available on the board docs, so you can go ahead and do that, but that is basically the, that's involved in it, so.
So it's just going to be a one yes or no, just a one?
Yes, just a one yes or no.
Even though there's two things, right, so it's moving the.
It's all in one resolution, so you have to vote yes, so yeah, you don't have the option to vote.
Right.
Yes, but no on the, on the 750. It's all, it's all in one.
Just wanted to clarify that, okay.
Okay, and certainly more to come on this, we will, there will be a notice going out, we will do some, we will do our best to communicate to the, to the community through emails, flyers, and, and, and town halls, you know, to get all this information out there and answer any questions or concerns that, that folks may have. Okay? And again, obviously, the idea of doing a special election for this on February 15 is so that we get everything in line in time to do heavy work in the summer. If we waited till our, till our normal election season in, in May, we wouldn't, no way have the time to get that vote done and then get the, the heavy work at the, at the Cottle Cafeteria done, started in the summer, so, okay? I don't think I asked for a motion on this, did I? No, I didn't. So actually, did I read? So basically, the motion is resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District approves a special district meeting on Wednesday, February 15, 2023. You have a motion? Therese, second. Cynthia, any discussion? We've talked about this quite a bit, any other comments on this? All in favor? All right, great. So that brings us to personnel recommendations. Resolve the Board of Education on the recommended, recommendation of the superintendent of schools approves Agenda Items A through D. Do you have a motion? Lori, second. Therese, any discussion on these? All in favor? All right, great. Okay, that brings us to the end, we do need to go into an executive session, though, quickly for, for one personnel matter, so I'm not going to close the meeting out yet, I'm just going to ask for a motion to enter into executive session. Lori, second. Laura, all in favor? Okay, so we'll be back out in a little bit to close the meeting, or can we close the meeting from there? All right, so we're going, we're going to close the meeting from, from executive session, you know, the door will be open, anyone from the public can come if they want to, but we'll close it from there. Thank you.